Without objection then, I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 7:10 PM. All members of the council are present. I would ask first that we, even though it's a little bit different than our normal kind of meetings, we do the pledge of allegiance. So if you'll stand with me and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So our, for our meeting today, when folks from, when our attendees want to speak, if you can raise your hand, if you, if you can, we will certainly recognize you. The first item on our agenda is really, oh, it's the land acknowledgement. And as he was the person who suggested that we do this at every meeting, I wanted to give Counselor Breyer an opportunity to read the land acknowledgement for us at this meeting. Counselor Breyer?
Thank you. Akina, we recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are in the ancestral homeland of the Poconocat tribe within the original territory of the Poconocat Nation. We commit to ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the Poconocat people whose ancestral lands and water we benefit from today. Akina.
Thank you, Counselor Breyer. Next item is to discuss and act on resolutions. And this, this resolution is for a member, a longtime employee of the town of Barrington. And unless there's any objections to it, I would ask that we pass this motion and then we can read it aloud. Do I hear a motion to pass this resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion passes. This is a resolution honoring David A. Monti. And Mr. Monti has been a member of our DPW for many years. And before I read this, I, I just want to point out that the folks at DPW did a terrific job during our last storm. One of the things I like to say is they're, they're really kind of one of our first responders. Because if, if they don't clear the roads, then our fire department and our police department don't get through. So their, their work is critical and we're very grateful to them. Whereas Mr. Monti was hired by the town of Barrington on January 4, 1982, at the age of 21. Mr. Monti started his career with Barrington Department of Public Works after the town's sanitary sewer was installed. Whereas Mr. Monti was instrumental in all the installations and inspections and has full knowledge of the complete sewer system, including all stations and injectors. Whereas during his tenure, Mr. Monti was involved with the replacement of the 3.5 mile force main in 2006, 2007. And whereas, after 24 years of service at the town of Barrington and the Department of Public Works, Mr. Monti was promoted to sewer foreman. Whereas Mr. Monti took part in putting in place the new Evoqua treatment system in 2018. This treatment reduces hydrogen sulfide levels in the town sewer system in accordance with Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management regulations. And whereas Mr. Monti is still an integral part of the sewer division, his work is mostly unseen because he does his job so well. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Barrington does hereby recognize and thank David A. Monti for his outstanding efforts and concern for the local community over the past 40 years, presented by the Town Council of the town of Barrington, Rhode Island, in January 2022. Thank you, Mr. Monti, for your service to our town. I would now, unless Alan Corvey has something to say about this?
I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes.
It just echo what you said. Dave's been a guy we can always count on. He's always there when we need him. And I think you said it perfectly. No news is good news when you don't hear much from the sewer department. So it's always a good thing and he makes sure things keep running. There was one Sunday, he was called back 10 times because of alarm and pump failures. And he was there every time. So he, he's a guy we can always count on and he's, his knowledge is invaluable. So thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is announcements and I would ask our new town manager, Phil Hervey, to take us through those.
Thank you, President Carroll. My first announcement is that we have a new me, the new director of planning, building, and resiliency, who's here with us tonight. Teresa Kreen, her first day on the job was today. So I don't know, Teresa, can you say a couple of words?
Sure. Thank you, Phil, and thank you, councilors. It's really a privilege to have the opportunity to serve the town of Barrington. I'm really looking forward to carrying the baton from Phil and the team in the planning, building, and resiliency department. I had a chance to get to know everybody a little bit today. I come from a background of being at the University of Rhode Island for 14 years, working in regional planning and working in consultancy for a few years in planning and design. And so I really look forward to bringing that experience. And also the last 10 years, I focused almost exclusively on adaptation, coastal adaptation and resiliency. So I am really excited to move forward with really meaningful projects in the town and working with everybody across the different departments and our elected officials. So thank you so much for the warm welcome and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you as well. And hopefully, within the first year, you'll be able to fix climate change for us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The second announcement is that the, the next meeting of the 25 Watson Avenue Ad Hoc Committee will be next Wednesday, January 19th. And there's another one on Monday, January 31st. These meetings will be by Zoom. The town manager, myself, we, I issued a, an executive order on Friday, piggybacking off the governor's new executive order allowing for remote meetings again. And so that's why we're here tonight, for, for example. So that, that requires all town public bodies and departments holding public meetings to meet remotely. And that's going to be in place as long as I guess that's, that governor's executive order allows it. In addition, there, the tree planting and removal update, as of, let's see, this is between Jan, December 1st, 2020 to November 30th, 2021, 80 trees were removed and 110 trees were planted. The last announcement is that Martin Luther King Jr. Day is on Monday, the 17th of January. The library, the schools, public works, PEC Center for Adult Re enrichment, Town Hall, the recycling center, all of that will be closed. The Monday's reuse and recycling will be handled Tuesday, along with the regular route. That's it for the announcements.
Great, thank you. Next set of items on our agenda is what we call the consent agenda. These are usually non-controversial matters. And they are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda. It'll be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Before we move these items, is there anything that any member of the council wants to highlight specifically in the consent agenda? No, not, not in terms of voting differently on it, but just if you wanted to highlight a particular item? Okay. Does anyone have anything that they'd like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Counselor Breyer?
Yes, I'd like item number seven, approved reappointments to boards and commissions removed.
Okay, anything else? Any other member of the council? Okay, anyone? If anyone who is an attendee here wants to raise their hand? Not seeing any. Okay. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And on item seven, was there anything you wanted to say, Counselor Breyer? Or was this one that you wanted to abstain on?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to, to approve reappointments to boards and commissions as presented?
Promoted.
Second.
Motion made by Vice President Hum, seconded by Counselor Costello. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Abstain.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries with one abstention. The next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on endorsing the manager's expansion of the 25 Watson Avenue Ad Hoc Committee by up to four members, including three neighborhood representatives and one Barrington Land Trust Conservation Representative. For our town manager, who is also the chair of that committee, you could kind of take us through that.
Sure. The committee has met at least two times. And during those meetings, I kind of, it came, it became apparent that additional representation on the committee from the area near the monastery, I think that would be, that would help this process along as, as we go through multiple meetings over the next few months. I reached out to three abiders, well, two of them are across the street from the monastery on Watson. And one lives directly adjacent to it, to the, to the north of the site. The, the, these members are David Butera of 20, 275 Nyet Road, Mary Grenier of 10 Watson Avenue, and Diane Lipscomb of 6 Watson Avenue. And they've all agreed to join the committee. And as well, the town's consultants have been doing stakeholder meetings with various groups. And as part of that, it became apparent that the land trust, they're looking for additional input and have asked to be part of the committee as well. I don't quite have a name yet, but they're, the recommendation is to add one seat for the land trust.
So this is a little bit of a different kind of animal. It's not a committee that was created by the council. It was initially created by the manager. But in order to ensure that we were really bound by the Open Meetings Act, which require posting and making sure, you know, there was a quorum and so on and so forth. We endorsed at our November meeting, I think, the, maybe even earlier, the manager's committee. So in order to sort of keep that consistent with this, I think our manager was looking for an endorsement from us. Does any member of the council want to be heard on this? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion. I move to endorse the town manager's expansion of the Ad Hoc 25 Watson Avenue Development Committee to include three additional representatives from the neighborhood and one representative from the Barrington Land Conservation Trust.
Motion made by Vice President Hum, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Breyer. Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the, amending the number of seats on the open space committee. This is both Counselor Costello's, I think this is Counselor Costello's proposal.
Yeah, and, and I've, I've also, I discussed with Counselor Conway, and so really it's, it's both of us. We are both councilors with voting rights on the open space committee. Counselor Conway has taken on additional committees since her tenure began. And it has been challenging because we're voting members. If we miss a meeting, if we're unable to attend, we have a conflict, then that counts against form. And the open space committee has had an issue, meeting quorum at a couple of meetings. And therefore, I don't see the necessity of having two of us, and it can be just one of us on that. And given Counselor Conway's conflicts, I, I think that we, I'm more likely to be able to make those, to make those meetings. I have discussed, it's been discussed with the Chair, Kelly Rice, and she is on board with the single change of reducing the membership on the open space committee by, by one, by having a single town counselor on that, on that committee. Now, the other way we could, we could also do it is to remove my voting rights from that position. I would just be a liaison to it. I'm somewhat ambivalent about that. I make the, the vast majority of the meetings. And so I actually, I think on average, if I'm over 50%, I'm helping towards quorum. And so I'm happy to keep the voting rights. But if the council, if my colleagues feel that we should remove voting rights, then we could do that and that would effectively reduce it by two for quorum purposes and just leave me as liaison. But the Chair Rice today followed up with an email to me saying that she would just support the single change.
Okay. Okay, any, any further discussion? Counselor Breyer?
I have just a question because it's a bit unique that a council member has voting rights. When the committee was established with that structure, what was the rationale for the council member to have voting rights on the committee?
That predates me, but I did talk to, to Mike Gercillo about it. And he confirmed that there were voting rights and the thinking was that it was, it is, it was meant to be ad hoc in the beginning, as I understood it. And so there were specific issues that the council wanted more weight on in terms of, of voting on it. But I, in the operation of that committee, I don't think it's absolutely necessary. And therefore, I don't have a strong position on it. I think I can help towards quorum, but I don't, I don't have to keep it if my colleagues object to, to the voting rights.
I didn't have an inclination either way. I was just curious because it's unique.
Yeah, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to add one thing, if you don't mind.
Sure.
There are two open slots. There's a conservation commission representative and an at-large public seat that's open. So just, I want to point that out in case, in case you wanted to reduce it a little further. I don't have the, I mean, the Chair hasn't indicated that she'd like to do that, but that's obviously within our discretion. And, and I'm, I'm open to, if we, if we're, if we don't think we can fill that, they could see from the at-large. I think that would, that may make some sense. I think the Conservation Commission is a natural partner. And so to me, I would tend to keep that seat if we could, if we could entice a, a member to, 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 to serve there. I think that would make some sense and, and but I'm, I'm open to reducing by the, by the public seat unless we think we're going to be able to fill it. I, I think that we have some, some quality candidates for at least one related board and commission. I would tend to think we could, we could probably fill both of those seats. But I, again, I'm open to what my colleagues would like to do on.
Vice President Hum, please.
Yeah, Mr. Costello, thanks, thanks for, for raising this and, and having these discussions and seeing it through. I guess if you don't mind me putting you on the spot, is, is it fair to say is your recommendation to follow the Chair's suggestion of eliminating the council, the second council position on the committee? Or are you recommending something different? I want to make sure that I understand exactly. I think, I think since, since you're probably the best person suited to, to, to make that recommendation, to maybe put you on the spot and see, see what you would recommend based on your discussions and understanding.
See, it's contrary to my personality to make a soft recommendation, but that's really what I'm doing. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
You all know me well enough to know I don't usually do things this way, so I understand your confusion.
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I, I would recommend that. That's where the Chair is. I may come back to, to the council again if we, if we have continued problems with quorum. But I, I actually think in the short term, I can help with, with, with meeting quorum by retaining the voting rights. And so that's where.
Counselor Breyer?
Are there any alternate slots on that committee?
Not that I'm aware of. That, that would be something I should have known. And that does put me on the spot. I apologize for not having that information.
So I know that we have vacancies, but you know, in, in the past, it has been full. And I imagine they, they might have had the quorum issues even when it was full. So perhaps rather than eliminating the second council seat, converting the second council seat to an alternate, so we can, you know, hopefully find another volunteer who's willing to serve. Maybe they still have a few folks who have difficult schedules, but it can help prevent missing quorum without making it more difficult to change the voting number.
I like that. I'm, I'm, I'm aboard with that. That sounds good.
Let me suggest a motion and folks can tell me if this works. I'll make a motion to reduce the number of seats on the open, well, I make a motion to revise the number of seats on the open space committee by removing one of the two council member seats, converting that to an alternate position and appointing Counselor Costello to fill the council member seat.
I would second that.
Okay, Mary, did you get that? I don't know if Mary can hear us, but it was to revise the number of seats, removing one of the two council member seats, converting it to an alternate and appointing Counselor Costello to the remaining council member seat. It was a motion.
I know, thanks.
Yeah, great. And seconded by Counselor Costello. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Breyer?
Aye.
Counselor Conway?
Aye.
Counselor Costello?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Great. So the next item on the agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. And the first group is for the Board of Library Trustees. And I would ask if Ms. Kelly Freeman is here? Oh, there, there she is. Phil, could you bring Ms. Freeman in?
Right, she's in.
Ms. Freeman, thank you for, thank you for attending. And can you tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Board of Trustees? Sorry, we can't hear you yet. Ms. Freeman?
There, oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Sorry, I'm driving and I'm on my phone.
So if you, if you want to pull over, that's, we can, we can come back to you.
All right, I will do that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask if Christie Green is available. I see that she's here. Ms. Green, not seeing her.
She listed?
Yes.
Is it?
Your hand is raised, so she's at the top.
Oh, thank you. I didn't see that. Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Yeah, how about now? Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. And please tell us a little about yourself and why you'd like to be on Board of Trustees.
Thank you. So as you introduced me, my name is Christie. And I'm a school librarian for, you know, more than two decades now. And I recently moved to Rhode Island from Doha, Qatar, where I was working in Qatar Foundation School. And prior to that, I was a school librarian at Korea International School in Seoul. And before that, I was a school librarian in Tennessee, really exotic location of Chattanooga. And so I'm repatriating due to COVID and wanting to plant some roots. And prior to leaving the United States, I worked for local government in Chattanooga. I worked for the Assessor of Property for about five years while I was becoming a school librarian. And so I really enjoyed that and that's something you can't do as an expat. You're not going to be involved in your local municipality when you're living in a foreign country. And so I saw this opportunity to learn more about my community and maybe to serve in, in some way. And that's what brought me here.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, thank you very much for your willingness to serve.
Yeah, nice to see you all.
Ms. Freeman?
Yes.
Safe place and you can tell.
I am, I pulled over.
Great.
Well, I'm a special education teacher. I teach in Providence. We moved to Barrington last year. My husband had been in the military and he had decided to get out and to go to medical school. So he just opened a private practice here in Barrington where we're living. And I just wanted to be part of the community and be able to serve the community in some way. So we've moved around a lot, but we decided that this is finally where we're going to settle. So we've been in different countries and we had just moved from Oklahoma.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Freeman? Well, thank you as well for your willingness to serve. I would call in the next person on our list, Drew Niderpelt? Don't know.
Seeing him.
I'm not seeing him either. If you, oh, he may be under 11th Guardian ad litem, 11th Circuit Guardian ad litem. Is, is the, is this?
Yes, this is Drew Niderpelt. Yes, hello.
Hi, thank you for coming in tonight. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the Library Board of Trustees.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. Well, following the list of folks moving to Barrington from nether regions, I and my wife just moved up last year to help her mother during COVID from Miami. We've now moved to Quincy Adams here in Barrington. And I, like the other candidates, also believe in, in throwing yourself wholeheartedly into the new communities in which we live. I'm a volunteer firefighter in Warren. I just finished EMT school. And I'm writing a screenplay for a book I wrote with PGA Tour player Ken Green. I've owned two publishing companies in New York City, have about 100 books in the Library of Congress that I've, I've published. I haven't, I mean, I've through Baucher and other Ingram and Baker and Taylor. I know that distribution of libraries, et cetera, I've, I've raised money for various charities, et cetera. I'm a guardian ad litem in the 11th judicial circuit down in, in Miami, which because of COVID, I can still do long distance. You know, I've, I've got a background in fundraising. I've certainly got a, a background in publishing. You know, I've I've got a background in fundraising. I've certainly got a uh a background in publishing, and uh I've got a pretty um robust uh history of helping the communities in which I live. So that's truly what I'm 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 hoping to uh achieve. And if I don't do it on the library uh board, then perhaps there'll be another opportunity somewhere down the road. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, sir. Uh, any questions from Stan Lederpelt? Okay, thank you, sir. Um, and now I wonder if we could hear from Martha Rush Mueller. If she is on here. Yes, she is. You can unmute yourself. Ms. Rush Miller. Oops.
What?
I don't think we wanted that.
What happened?
Okay. Ms. Rush Miller, if you could um unmute yourself, you might try clicking the little.
We go.
There you go. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem.
Oh, dear.
Tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to the Library Board of Trustees.
Oh, I'd be happy to. Um, my husband and I moved here seven months ago because we got a grandchild during COVID. And we are, we're thrilled to be here in Barrington. We've been here, as I said, seven months. And I just, I believe that that libraries are really cornerstones in our communities, and we are so impressed with the Barrington Library, the programming. It's so creative, and we have a writer in our family. She is a new, she's a Rhode Island writer. She wrote a book called Rising about sea level rise. And I I echo everybody else. I I just would like to make a contribution to the community and be a part of the community, and that's really it. Um, I just think that they're like national parks. The libraries are as important. They're one of our wonderful creations in this country, so I would love to serve.
Great. Uh, any questions for her? Nope. Well, thank you, ma'am, very much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being a grandparent.
Thank you.
The the next person up, our our last uh person to be interviewed is Chris Watson. Mr. Watson, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Evening, and uh thank you very much. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here with you all. Uh, thanks for considering my candidacy as well as that of everybody else. Um, I'm a resident, I've been here a resident of Rhode Island, I'm sorry, Barrington for about uh eight and a half years now. Um, I spent uh quite a few years with the Bay Spring Community Center, uh initially doing marketing and programming, eventually becoming the president of the Board of the Community Center. And while I was doing that, I had the opportunity to invite Chris Chin uh shortly after she joined the library to come speak, and the topic of the particular session was silence, and we thought that that was fitting with a library, but it was really uh extraordinary, her discussion about the capabilities of the library not to be silent, but to make a real noise and be a tremendous resource in our community. Uh, my daughter has been coming to the library since she was a toddler. Um, I just think that there are so many opportunities for the library to play a tremendous role within the community, whether or not it is in uh outreach to uh the elder community, uh looking at how to get uh younger uh community members more involved, especially in the era of social media and online communications. Um, I believe that uh coming to uh the trustees uh as a global marketing and communications uh professional, I'm I'm Senior Director of Marketing and Communications for a tech firm uh that um I would just be incredibly honored to have the opportunity to help guide the library uh in the coming years, uh both through the challenges and the opportunities ahead.
Great. Well, thank you, sir. Um, any questions for Mr. Watson? Okay, seeing none. Um, thank you for your willingness to serve. Does anyone want to make a motion? Counselor Conway.
Yes, so I serve as the liaison to the Library Board of Trustees. Um, and I'm so impressed with, as always, the volunteers that reach out and are interested in joining committees. Um, I also am so impressed by those who have just moved to town who are interested, and and please know that I was one of you and and ended up in the council, so I applaud you for for all of that volunteerism. Um, Chris Watson has been endorsed by Chris Chin and by Vince Wicker, who is the um Chair of the Board of Trustees. And so I would like to make a motion, um, knowing that we have a embarrassment of riches of incredible volunteers who are willing to support the library, but make a motion to appoint Chris Watson to be a full member of the Board of the Library Board of Trustees with an expiration date of December 31st, 2024.
Counselor Conway has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Castell seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye that motion carries. Thank you all so much for uh being willing to serve. We do appreciate it. And now you are uh folks that we'll be looking to for other committees. So, thank you. Um, next item on our agenda is to um interview for two vacancies on the Resilience and Energy Committee. Um, and uh the first, there is one vacancy, which is a full member, and then a first alternate. Uh, and the first person if is Courtney Fairbrother here? Is anyone seeing her or not?
Not seeing.
Okay. Um, Michael Kadish.
Yeah, hi, I'm Michael Kadish. Uh, honored to be here. Uh, I, like many of the people tonight, have recently moved to to Barrington, but actually I moved back to Barrington. I had um I had a couple of years here as a toddler, so it's a thrill to come back as an adult, uh and I'm I'm here to try to contribute to the community uh in the same way, and and really impressed, honestly, in this area with the staff uh and leaders that the town already has. So coming to this thinking, um what experience can I share just to make a contribution? I'm currently a consultant who works on solar policy uh nationally in support of of different environmental groups. Uh, previously, I ran a nonprofit that installed solar on low-income families and did job training uh for hundreds of people to get them jobs in the clean energy economy uh that was in Los Angeles. Uh, also there, I served with the League of Conservation Voters as the president, uh and previously in my career, I worked with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Just would love the opportunity to to contribute. Uh, I I especially think um having moved here with my fiancee and intending to start a family, that uh thinking about what will Barrington be like in 20, 30 years from now, uh in terms of resilience uh is critical, as you you all know better than I, um, the challenges uh that lie ahead in the long time horizon. So just really happy to be able to have an opportunity to play a role, a small role in supporting what seems like an excellent, excellent, full-time staff with 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 wonderful backgrounds. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kadish. Um, any questions? For our candidate? Nope. Okay, um, so the next uh interviewee is Christina Watkins. Not seeing Christina.
Not seeing her.
Ms. Watkins, if you can raise your hand if you're here under a different uh name for uh Zoom purposes. Okay. Great. Um, I guess Ms. Watkins isn't here and um and Courtney Fairbrother uh is not here as well, so um I will make a motion to appoint Michael Kadish uh as a member of the resilient, as a full member of the Resilience and Energy Committee with a term to expire on November 30, 2024. Is there a motion made and signed by Counselor Castell? Uh, any further discussion? Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brier.
Aye.
Counselor Conway.
Aye.
Counselor Castell.
Aye.
And I also vote aye that motion carries. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for being willing to serve the town. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This is a three-minute statement. Uh, this is for the members of the public to speak regarding a topic that is not already on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized and state your name and residency for the record, please. Anyone from the public like to be heard? See, one hand raised. Yes, Mr. Remashitis. Remember, sir, I mean, if you're talking about something else, that's fine, but we are going to talk about the uh Ad Hoc Field Advisory Committee, but you're certainly welcome to talk on anything else.
Uh, Tom Remashitis, One Howard Street. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can see who is represented in a a list. We used to have that before. So seeing since we're going to be talking about that Ad Hoc Committee, we can see who is present from the committee to speak. Is there a way to get a list of names? Like we used to have before you went to the webinar. They were they were posted on the side before where you could see who was in the meeting. Now we can't do that?
Um, you don't have a a button along the bar that says participants or anything like that?
I don't see anything like that on on Zoom. It used to be there until you went to this different webinar.
Yeah, um, Phil, are you, is there a way that we can show who else is in attendance at this meeting?
I've just promoted TR to panelist. I think you can see it once you're a panelist.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to go out of turn or whatever, you know, but I don't want somebody to not feel comfortable by sharing, and they don't want to see who's there or whatever, but just as the Ad Hoc Committee.
Um, I don't know a way that we can do that for all of the.
Okay.
But it's something we'll, we can look into.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, uh, anyone else uh want to be heard for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss and receive the final report from the Ad Hoc Athletic Field Advisor Committee. And um, this was uh a lot of work. This was a these folks worked very, very hard on this, based on a joint committee between the Town Council and the School Committee. And I would call on one of the chairs, uh Steve Boyagen, who is here, to just take us through the field, the the turf field part portion of the report in kind of a summary fashion, so so people could see that. Um, Steve Boyagen, you see, there he is. Steve, can you uh, are you able to unmute?
I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for coming in or coming to the the screen.
Sitting in my living room, happy to do it. Um, yeah, for forgive me, but uh you cut out for about 30 seconds when I became a panelist. Um, so I'm not sure precisely what you asked. I heard as much as uh talk us through the report. So happy to do that. If there's anything else, just let me know along the way.
I know that your main focus was the artificial turf piece, but if you could do a little bit on field use and scheduling and maintenance and acquisition as well.
Yeah, sure. Um, so we can tell you, I can tell you right off the bat, the way we sort of organized this, it was, I think, 21 members, uh maybe counting non-voting members there. Um, the struggle there was obviously, that's a lot of people to get together at any given time, and there were a lot of issues to tackle. So we immediately split up into subcommittees. We split up into four of them. Uh, finance was one of them that was headed by Jacob. Uh, maintenance and acquisition was headed by Anna Clancy. Scheduling was headed by Gina Bay, and I handled artificial turf. The way we kind of tackled the problem as best we could, um is to sort of think about what was, what was the problem based on field shortages that were reported to us previously. And so we kind of, and this will maybe give Rob some shell shock or PTSD, uh started with designing for a peak hour. Um, trying to identify when is it we have the highest demands on our fields? It turns out that is weekday evenings in the spring. That's when you have uh spring soccer, lacrosse is in full swing, Little League is playing, and a smattering of other folks. So with that, we figured out from the scheduling piece, and that was Gina Bay's committee, that um we we have a need for two additional multi-use fields. Uh, large multi-use fields, not not little, you know, patches of grass. One is to fill the needs of the athletes that are actually playing. The other one is to be able to maintain and rest a field on a rotating basis. So you would pick whichever field in a given year needs a full rehab, you would take it offline, and you would assign everyone other field space. So with that, we set it about trying to figure out how to sort of design for that demand. Um, we came up with a number of options. One of them is set forth in the maintenance and acquisition piece, which is the improvement at Haynes Park. The other option, and I wouldn't call them mutually exclusive, but offering a similar type solution is the turf piece. Um, and that's because of the increased usage, and I'll walk through that in one second. But the long and the short of it is that we are short two multi-use fields. Um, on a spring weekend, on a spring weekday, we have a problem because lacrosse has, even for young age kids, very large fields, and they take up uh what would be the three multi-use fields at the middle school, plus the multi-use field that is at uh forgive me, at St. Andrews Farm. And one of those, one of those middle school fields is actually somewhat unavailable because it's the outfield of a 60-90 baseball diamond. So when you take all that, what we say is, okay, well, where are we going to place another field? Maintenance and acquisition looked at a number of options. They laid them out in the report, and their takeaway was Haynes Park is our best option. So you have underutilized space both along Washington Road and Haynes Park Drive, and it requires uh a few things. One is a long-term lease, which was executed for 30 some odd years to justify an investment, irrigation, and then redesigning of the field space. One of the issues is along Washington Road, you have a problem that that also is the outfield of a baseball diamond. So in the spring, your period of peak demand, that's one field less. You know, you call it a field and a half, really. It's not two fields. Um, reconfiguring the baseball diamonds Harrington and the softball field on Haynes Park Drive, it gives you really an option to build a full-size soccer field over there. It preliminarily looks like it's a million and a half dollar project. Um, would take the fields offline for about two years. Um, so there's your maintenance and acquisition piece. I'll let Jacob talk. I'll let Jacob talk through finances. Scheduling, the other aspect of, of their project was really figuring out how to optimize the use of the field. And what we learned is, and you can see it just driving by, there were times where despite a field shortage, there are empty fields. And the thinking there is to use a software program that will integrate with what the schools already use so that any league at any given moment can say, is there available field space in town? How do we best use it? And gives people more visibility and more flexibility. So. Give me one sec. Then the other option, like I mentioned, was artificial turf. It's not an exclusive option, you know, but it's, it's a different kind of solution. The thinking there is to say, how do we get more use out of the fields we have? And we set about doing that by trying to answer three questions that were put to us by the council. One was cost. One was environmental considerations and the last one being health and safety. The cost, we figured out through consultation with various artificial turf industry players. And they were John Heward and Mark Curran, who were very helpful to us. And we estimated about $10 a square foot. When you take that cost, we're really just talking about the installation of a turf field. So we looked at other locations such as Victory Field or Shinaisey. And you run across obstacles at Victory Field being the existing infrastructure. At Shinaisey, it's a landfill. So you'd have engineering and environmental considerations and all this sunk costs before you've built a square foot of turf. Given that, we arrived at a proposed location of the high school campus along County Road running from roughly Lincoln over to Federal Road. 380,000 square feet, more or less. So about eight acres. And it sounds kind of overwhelming, given the size and the cost of it. But you have to look back and say, you know, it was 2014 when a group of citizens proposed doing this at Victory Field. And the cost estimate, more or less in 2014, was $2.5 million to install turf at Victory Field. A lot of that had to do with reconfiguration of the existing infrastructure there, the track, building vomitoriums for the bleachers, moving light poles, maybe relocating the JV baseball field. And so you do all of that work and what you ended up with was really just a single turf field that would accommodate baseball, soccer. It would have been made wide enough for lacrosse, but as it exists, it was not. But one field at a time. And so the limitation there really was that the dimensions of the infrastructure needed such that it was inflexible. And so the report explains the dimensions of some youth fields. For example, it would not fit, if I recall correctly, lacrosse field for anyone older than nine other than one field, which seems like it's a non-solution really to the youth leagues' problems. It might be a solution to certain high school problems, but that seems to be a separate question as to whether the school committee would want to proceed with just an improvement to a high school athletic facility without any accompanying benefit to youth leagues. So once you kind of take the dimensions of these fields, you realize what you're looking for is a big, wide-open space. And there's very few of those in Barrington. We looked at, we looked at St. Andrews Farm, Shinaisey, the middle school, which TR had actually brought this proposal to the middle school building committee who rejected it, so that was kind of off the table. We also looked at the entirety of the high school campus. And every other field at the high school has similar constraints, either rebutters, tennis courts, for example, across Lincoln Ave. The parking lot of the high school, if you talked about what used to be the varsity soccer field. And so you were really left with this big, wide-open field space that is currently the outfield for the baseball diamonds. That would allow you to get about six youth league fields up until age 14, I think it was. So it's much more flexible. It's much more useful. It's also very large. Large is a problem for a number of reasons. One, we obviously had environmental concerns being raised by the community in terms of the amount of plastic, the cost of it, the recyclability. And the other issue is lighting. So I noticed in the summary, it was a little understated. The lighting is not $80 a pole. It's estimated to be $80,000 to $100,000 a pole. A huge expense, but when you think about lighting, you try to figure out where would it be acceptable to install it? And the fact of the matter is, most of the little neighborhoods in town, I just, no one really felt that the neighbors were going to swallow a light. A turf field without lighting, and I need to be very clear about this, a turf field without lighting just doesn't serve the purpose of installing artificial turf at all. Our kids are always in school, right? And so except for the weekends, you have to imagine that you're really not using these fields at all until 3:00 PM. I can tell you from my own experience coaching baseball, in April when we start and in October when we end, the sun is down at 6:30. So you have three and a half hours on a weeknight to actually get any use of these fields without lighting. The whole point of artificial turf is that you're getting, you know, eight hours of use or seven hours of use in a day. And that's really what, what it offers you. So without lighting, you're really nowhere. So you have to assume that you're going to absorb the cost of installing the lighting. You have to assume you need to find a location where that's going to be acceptable to the neighbors. So between that, security concerns and vandalism were another reason that we ended up at the high school. I'll give you an example. The other night, I went for a walk. I ended up behind Hampton Meadow School. Someone had dumb donuts on the playground in their car. No big deal out there. It's mud anyway. But on an artificial turf field, maybe half a million, a million dollars of damage. So what we wanted is a secure place with high visibility where nothing like that would ever happen. Parking was another consideration. Shinaisey has insufficient parking for the events that are there already. Same with St. Andrews Field, really. If you installed the artificial turf there, certainly Haynes Park has serious parking concerns. So none of those options really, really played. So that's what we ended up with. When we started looking at that piece of land, we ran into an obvious obstacle, which is the existing baseball fields. And that, that's a problem for a number of reasons. One, as I said at the beginning, the peak hour of demand is a spring evening on a weekday. That is also when the baseball team will be playing their games. They wrap with enough time left over for some practices afterwards, but there's not much room for overlap. The other thing is, at the time, we had picked this location. We weren't certain what the baseball staff at the high school really thought of it. It turns out for a number of reasons, including injuries, that they don't want to play baseball on artificial turf. So. So that's kind of how we ended up where we did. We needed to pick a location to even conceptualize and talk about these issues. Once we did, we kind of tried to distill the question to one of dollars. I, we had all sat through meetings previously where some people would say that artificial turf would cause cancer. Other peoples would say that artificial turf solves all of our problems and you'd be an idiot not to do it. And just hearing things in absolutes like that was not terribly helpful. So I think the committee tried very hard to be objective about it and just distill this down to what can we say with any certainty? And if it comes down to a question of dollars, that's a question that every taxpayer is equally equipped to answer for themselves when they voted the financial town meeting about it. So talking about dollars, a lot of things had been said before that there was zero maintenance associated with artificial turf. That is absolutely not the case. It is a much more expensive solution. We're talking about $150,000 to $200,000 a year in capital reserves that would need to be dedicated to replacing the surface every, say, 10 years. But for that money, you actually do get much of what is promised by the people who have always told us you need to do this. It can be used pretty much around the clock as long as kids are willing to play. Subject to the lighting issue and subject to neighbors saying, time to shut it down. We assume, having kind of polled a few coaches, that your oldest kids who are playing in youth league, say 14 and 15, that their game to practice or play until about 9:00 or 9:30 at night. It seems like a reasonable time to shut it down for consideration of the neighbors. So you're really talking about when high school gets out and can use it for practices at about 3:00 PM till about 9:30 at night every weekday. So you're getting about six and a half hours of use every weekday. And then, you know, 8:00 AM till 9:00 PM on the weekends. As far as health and safety, we ended up with a lot of unanswered questions there. The studies say they are inconclusive. There are a lot of reasons for that. They're explained in the report. Primarily, it has to do with injury rates being hard to measure because it's hard to control when you're doing these studies, you know, what happened with a particular injury. There was one particularly bizarre study of abrasions where they actually managed to do this in laboratory conditions by using the ears of dead rapids and scraping them over the, the turf. And, and you can say, okay, that's a laboratory-controlled experiment. But twisted ankles, you know, ACL, MCL. You can't tell whether that would have happened on grass or turf. And the best studies kind of tell you that. They say, you know, there's no way to control for this. Anyone who tells you they have the answer is not telling you the truth. That being said, some of the most pessimistic studies measure it at about 58% increased risk of injury among high school athletes. And it's kind of a value judgment whether or not you proceed at that point based on that statistic. My daughter's a soccer player and I thought to myself about that. Would I let her play soccer if I thought it was 58% more dangerous than it is? And I guess my answer is, yeah, I would. Because I perceive the risk as being very low to begin with. So that it's 58% higher is kind of insignificant. But that's kind of just one way of looking at it, you know, to the person, the parent of an injured kid or to the injured kid themselves. You know, who ends up with a serious knee injury, that's no small thing. That, you know, that injury might have been caused by turf. And you, you really can't tell. What you can tell is that they, the studies all say attention to footwear, and I know it seems like a minor detail, is a very serious thing. There are turf cleats and then there are cleats for grass. And the purpose of wearing turf cleats is to allow your foot to let go before your knee gives out. On grass, that's a natural reaction because the, the grass and the dirt itself does that. That just doesn't happen on artificial turf. So, you know, you got to factor that into cost, I suppose, that you would say every player would have to abandon their metal cleats, which you can't use on it. They might have to invest in a pair of shoes, turf shoes, to play on artificial turf. But, you know, flip side is, they say, we're already playing on artificial turf around the state anyway. What's the big deal? I don't know. I mean, again, it's a value judgment. At the end of the day, there is no recommendation to build or not build the turf field contained anywhere in the report. What it is, it's, it's trying to give you the various factors that you need to weigh in making that decision. Ultimately, because we proposed to do it on school property, if that's where it's built, that's really going to be the school committee's decision. But if you're really trying to address the field problems through building an artificial turf field, it was clear to us that a single artificial turf field at Victory Field really just, it doesn't get you anywhere for youth leagues. All the games will still be canceled when it's muddy, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, the only way to do it is in expansive space that's wide open and flexible so that I can have under six soccer kids in the morning and under 10 lacrosse kids in the afternoon. Other than that, it's, it's a lot of money spent, more to solve a high school athletics problem. So happy to answer any questions you have, but that's the gist of it.
So, thank you. First of all, thank you very much to you and everybody on the committee for, for this. As I recall, and it's been a while, what we were looking for, we didn't have, you know, a turf field as something we're going to decide on. We just had this debate and it seemed to come up from time to time. And the issue was, as you say, you, you get folks in who say that if you're on turf, you're going to get cancer. And then you get folks in that seem to think that if you have turf, you won't, it'll be a cure for cancer or something. So we wanted to get a report like the report that is there that lays out all of these things so that we have kind of in one location all of this information that will help us if, if it comes time for a decision. Is it safe? Is it, is it cost-effective? All of those different things. And I think that, that's what this report did. So we're not here tonight to decide whether to put in an artificial turf field. And as you said, the recommended location is not even within our jurisdiction. It's, it's on the school fields. But I think this is really helpful. And I wanted to see if anyone on the council had any questions. I see TR does, but I wanted to give folks in the council a chance if they had questions or things they'd like to add. Okay. TR, I mean, oh, Counselor Castell?
Hey neighbor, how you doing, Mr. Boyagen? I, I, I wanted to ask you, I was curious because it seemed to me, I believe the final vote for the report, to approve the report was 8-0. Is that correct?
That's, that's, I don't remember how many people were there, but it was, yes.
Okay, I was wondering why, because I think you had 15 voting members on the committee and I was wondering what the, you know, who, what was the reason for half the committee not participating in the final ratification of the document?
They weren't there. I would guess that had a combination of factors contributing to that. There was a long pause in our work. I'll take the blame for that. I was trying to become a doctor and study the health risks associated with artificial turf. But on top of that, it was, you know, your in-person meeting during COVID called on relatively short notice on a weeknight. I, I, I don't know the reason. But those are a number of guesses.
The 58%, that is, that's the Ohio study, I think that was?
That was at Case Western Reserve University. And they break it down by sport. I thought it was interesting which sports they said were more or some less dangerous. But yeah, the details of that, there's actually an abstract of the study reproduced in the report that shows you the incidents by sport. One thing to keep in mind, actually, that I should have highlighted, everyone, every study almost universally, and there's very little agreement between studies. And it's not scientists saying you're wrong or you're wrong. They're talking about uncontrolled variables. One variable that seems to be universal, there are more injuries in games than in practicing.
Yeah.
Anyone who's played sports, I think that sounds logical to them, but that's another reason that maybe Victory Field is not your ideal location. It's a game field. The outfield at the high school are typically practice fields for.
But there are, we don't, I didn't see any studies that were cited in the report that showed. I didn't see any studies that were cited in the report that showed fewer injuries on artificial turf. But there are a number that show more. And so that's sort of the state where we are. You can argue about, you know, why that might be, and they talk about footwear and things like that, but. But as far as the baseline level we're at is, we're assuming that fifty eight percent is roughly right and and that. I don't know of anything that any report that says fewer injuries is that, would that be accurate? This characterization?
Uh, I don't think so, no. So the authors of the Case Western study also published. After they published their own independent study of high school athletes. A meta-analysis of the existing literature on the subject. Um, and within that, they cite, it must have been two or three dozen studies. Reaching varying results. There are a number of studies that would say fewer injuries. A number that would say more, then some of them try to break it down by type of injury. Um, and it's all, you you really, you end up fully in the swamp. I mean, it's, uh. What sport were they playing? What were the field conditions in terms of precipitation, et cetera? What footwear were they wearing? Um, but there were a number of studies suggested that it was actually lower. There were some among college athletes suggesting lower. But then I pointed you to the NFL's, uh, Players Association study that said it was much higher. Um, I think, you you know, one thing I I neglected to mention. And that is, you know, sort of player preference. I read a letter in the paper not too long ago saying, well, we really need artificial turf. Because that's what we play on other places, et cetera. Among elite athletes, it is pretty much universal. They don't want to play on this. The goal of turf manufacturers, and they will tell you this point blank. We are trying our best to imitate a good grass surface. Right? That's all they're setting out to do. Our struggle on Barrington is we can't necessarily replicate that grass surface that professional athletes get to play on. Um, so you have to question two things. One is. Surface performance in terms of game quality, right? I mean, you know, your game's not as good when the field's lumpy. Um, the second is that's your controlling variable in terms of measuring for injuries. If the NFL Players Association says we're safer on grass. It's because they have field crews that pre-germinate their grass seed. And as soon as the pats leave the field on Sunday, they're putting down grass seed that's been soaking in water for seven days. And that's that's the truth. That's what they did when they were playing on grass. Um, to get it to germinate before the next game. Uh, we we just, we do not have the capacity to do that kind of stuff. We never will. It's not a matter of D P W not working hard enough for any of this. Uh, one, another example, for example, uh. Sodco is one of the main sod farms in the Northeast. It's actually in Exeter. They cut two types of sod. Your one inch sod that you usually put on your lawn and four inch sod. What four inch sod does is it allows them to go to a professional athletic field. Take out the whole surface, lay down four inch thick sod so it's playable that day on a perfect surface. These are the measures that these places go to to deliver that grass surface. And again, it's totally out of reach. Um, but still, when you talk about injuries and I'll bring it back to that, it it's. It's the struggle of comparing between. The control, which is your grass service and the turf surface you're playing on. And the turf surfaces themselves are not equivalent at all. Um, pers- personal example. My wife blew out her knee terribly on an artificial turf surface. Terribly. Surgery is still not right. Gonna need a knee replacement. That was twenty years ago. Um, that is not the product the manufacturers put out today. Uh, you know, their whole goal this whole time has been make my turf more marketable. And all the criticism they get is too many injuries, too many environmental concerns, et cetera, et cetera, not. Anything like grass. And they've they've worked very hard to try to get there. Whether they've gotten there or not. That's open to question and open to debate. Um, but. You know, we've come a long way. The question is really one of value judgment. On all of these topics. How much money are you willing to spend on it? How much, I mean, we can't get around the fact, it's plastic. It's a ton of plastic. Some people say that matters tremendously. Some people say. On balance, I think sports are more important. It's a value judgment that I don't blame anyone for making. But that that's all you really have to do with it.
Right. Now, I think the field expansion, just again, you're not, I guess we're not gonna solve this tonight, but. It it Haynes Park makes a lot of sense. We know what we're playing on with grass. Um. I, I don't know, maybe the ton of the report escaped me because my my impression from the report was that. As far as we know, um. It seems that if anything. Artificial turf is more likely to increase injuries over natural grass, but you're saying that's that's not the case. You that that it's really unknown.
It's it's unknown in certain contexts. So, for example, abrasions. That's pretty much a hundred percent. Your abrasions are higher on artificial turf. There's no, they've they've improved it tremendously, but it hasn't been fixed. Um. Concussions, for example, some artificial turf surfaces actually seem to perform better than a grass surface. Uh, but the, you know, again, saying injury in the abstract, the the studies will tell you. We just can't measure that. It's too broad a category. You know, the right footwear will prevent your ankle injury. The wrong footwear will cause you to blow out your knee. Um, those are the types of things that, you know, but but you just can't. Because at the point of treatment for these athletes, and this is what the studies will tell you, at the point of treatment. The doctor is not conducting an artificial turf study, so they don't ask the right questions. They don't. You know, so going back and looking at the data after the fact, you're you're left kind of with an unknown.
It used to be, if you played on turf before, when you would, you wear turf shoes. Are they with this? Are you guys thinking sneakers if you're gonna play on this or 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 turf shoes like with the? The rubber, um, little cleats?
Yeah, turf shoes. So turf shoes, uh, turf cleats are just kind of more cleats and shorter. Whereas your regular grass cleats are going to be fewer cleats and longer and bigger. Um, again, metals out of the question, so that's a very, that's a big issue for baseball. Um, you know, in the high, in the, you know, Little League, it's it's not an issue. They're they're not playing in, when I say Little League, I mean the little kids. Uh, the higher divisions in Little League, they're playing in metal cleats. You just, you know, you just can't use them on turf. Um, I can't, I struggle to think of other sports that. I mean, I played rugby here, but we don't have a rugby team anymore. I'm not sure football permits it, but someone could probably educate me on that.
Uh, if you, if you, if you step on the turf, then your foot. On an artificial turf in those turf shoes, a lot of the time, these. You'll, in the old days, was would not spin or turn. It would stick. And so that stick. Causes stress on the knee and the ankle if you take an impact from the side or twisting, shearing motion. We're on grass. Especially in mud, you're gonna spin out of that. So actually, the lack of traction. Keeps you safer on 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 the grass. That was the case. Maybe the modern turf, that may be different, but that's.
I don't think it is. I mean, certainly the NFL Players Association cited that very factor. And and that letter's quoted in there and there's a link to it. Um, that's basically the way they explain it. Either, you know, there are two opposing forces. One of your joints is gonna give out or the grass is gonna give out. And if the grass doesn't give out, it's gonna be your joint. Um, now, we have to be realistic and say. It's very unlikely that any of our players are exerting the types of forces that NFL players are exerting. But it's not impossible.
Yeah, and with with, I know with with concussions with kids, because I looked into that, you know, um. A lot of the time it's proportional. They are lower forces, but they're proportional, you know, with an eight-year-old to what it is for a twenty-two-year-old. It's just. You know, so it actually on on the eight-year-old, even though it's less force, it's proportional force. I I know, we're getting into. Science and I'm I'm certainly not qualified to, uh, to assess, uh, you know, but but I but I appreciate the effort and it's. And it's, um, it's comprehensive, you know, for sure.
Thank you, uh, T R. Please go ahead.
Oh, I I just wanna touch base on some of the stuff that we were talking about. I think we went with the higher number of injury percentage. Because that was one of the biggest ones that was out there when we did the report. So you're gonna get a percentage anywhere from thirty-five percent to fifty-eight percent. Saying it's gonna be more injuries on turf compared to grass. I've seen many injuries on grass fields compared to turf fields. Well, I think the other thing that Steve forgot to touch base on is the amount of time we spent on. Cancer-causing agents and recyclability and different, um, infills now, which are. Um. More out there, as he says, over the last twenty years, turf has come around. So. East Providence. Um, is putting in three of these recyclable fields. Martha's Vineyard just approved this field in. Steve, I can't remember the name of the the turf it is. Um. But the the infill is like a wood chip type. Material. And what I gave Mike at that last meeting was that recyclable turf field. Which is a hundred percent recyclable. That whole pad, the turf, plastic is all recyclable. There is no PFAS. Which is one of the major causing cancer. Products that you find in basically every. Piece of plastic that you touch has PFAS in it along with other stuff. But if you remember, I kind of jump around because I got a lot of stuff going through my head. But if you remember, a charge was a joint committee. Between Town Council and School Committee and. The Ad Hoc Committee. So this was a joint. Subject of where we ended up picking the product place, which was the high school. So I believe we should have a joint. Meeting with Council and School Committee together in a public forum. To go over this because that was my biggest concern in the beginning with the ad hoc. Because we're always fighting, who controls what? Who controls this? It's school committee. It's school property. It's town property, but we all pay the taxes. It's the same thing. So maybe we should meet as a joint committee. Council and School Committee to go over this and address every part of that. Jacob played a big role in the the, um. Scheduling and all that other stuff, you know, they spent a lot of time on it. We spent a lot of time. Hitting every aspect of what the town wanted us to hit. From, uh, environmental impacts and. Uh, the cancer causing and the chemicals and all that other stuff. So I don't think it's something that we should be. Making a rash decision on, but you gotta take the facts as we went with. High aspects of injury reports compared to low aspects. So it's not like, you know, maybe you could get the fifty-eight percent injury, but on the other hand, maybe it's only thirty-five percent. You know? That's where I'm coming from, you know, I think we should. Do our joint meeting and decide on that. It's not gonna happen overnight. You're still gonna get the people that are nears and for it and whatever. But we, I think we did a hell of a job as this whole committee. Trying to put everything aside. Steve said we were just. Thinking outside the box and we weren't with the, uh, a charge on, listen, this is what we want. But when we look at Haynes Park. That was. Um. A vision. With us as the committee, but Haynes Park is not gonna solve the problem. We still have a parking problem at Haynes Park. We're still gonna have problems in Haynes, um, big field. Even when we cut down trees to go along Washington Road, you're still gonna have to build a back area. So it wasn't one project over the other project. But it kind of came out that way at the financial town meeting with the old manager. So I just put it out there as being on Pox and Rec that it wasn't our decision to go with Haynes Park. It was. Um, just what we were doing in order to get money. For, you know, the the bond. Um, Phil knows what I'm talking about. We backed everything. It's one or the other or both or whatever, but Haynes Park is gonna run into a problem with parking. Um. Either one would work. But with that artificial turf. At the high school, we end up getting. Three full-size. Fields on top of the nine little fields, if I'm not mistaken. And when we talked to the athletic director. On turf, he says, I'll take any turf that's given to me, whether the baseball feels turf or not turf. So that would give them an opportunity to rearrange all that area over there and. Reconfigure the baseball fields the way that they should be. So that's about where I stand. I got some other stuff in my head, but I don't wanna keep dragging on because I kind of just ramble. Just with stuff coming out of my head, but I'm sorry. Um, I think we should meet as a group, as Council and School Committee, because that's what our joint. Um. Function was. And we'll see what goes on. I know there was something big written in on the paper. That we didn't do our job and. You know, our charge was to look at town sports in general, not just high school sports. So we were getting our, you know what busted because we weren't looking at. The high school victory field and Steve touched based on that really well. So sorry for taking up so much time. But that's where I think we should end up going down the road.
Thank you, T R, um, and I will, I will drop off that turf that you handed me that I've been carrying around in my car.
You can keep it as a souvenir.
That's all right, uh. Don Denham, Coach Denham.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Coach. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to touch base on a few things. I had the, um, honor of being on the Ad Hoc Committee. Uh, working with everybody, uh, who's spoke tonight and all the others. Uh, Mr. Costel, when you play in the new field turf, you use regular cleats. You do not wear field turf cleats. That, we tell our players that all the time. You will slip and slide everywhere. You will slip and slide on a wet grass field wearing the turf shoes. You wear regular cleats that are molded, not metal. Um, and. The other thing is when you talk about the fifty-eight percent of injuries or the thirty-five percent to fifty-eight percent. I think we have to take into account the fact that you are looking at a material. That is now widely being implemented all over the United States. So when you have something new coming in, you're gonna have a spike. Because more and more facilities are being changed over to field turf. And I'm, I was a part of this committee as a representative, as the one of the high school coaches. But when we came down to it, what is really important to understand is the youth sports. When you look around this town, our youth sports facilities that are grass are not multi-use. When it rains, they're shut down. And if it rains for two days, they're shut down for two days. We we looked at this facility and said, like T R and Steve said. It needs to meet for everyone. And having that open space to create that opportunity. To have a big turf field to create multiple fields. Allows for multiple opportunities for the youth sports all the way through. And the other thing that we have to understand is. Is that, is there a cost to it? Absolutely. But when you break down the cost over a period of time. You're you're not talking a lot of money for. Before you even get to fundraising or rentals, because rentals make a lot of money for these field. Fields. The city of Cranston paid off their first field turf at Cranston Stadium through rentals. Put in a second field turf, built a brand-new stadium over at Cranston High School West where I teach at. Now they're looking into two new baseball fields to feel turf in light. Because they see that there is financial stability and opportunity for these new fields. Because they are truly multi-use fields. Grass fields are not multi-use. They're only used when when mother nature allows it to be perfect. So does the high school benefit the high school kids? Absolutely, but they're just as important as the town kids. We're we're a nice, small. We're a nice, small community, we need to help everybody. So I think it's really important when we think about this. TR is right, everybody needs to sit down and come up with a true understanding of what is it going to mean for everybody to have this opportunity to use this multi, multi-use field. The other thing is, with lights, you allow the older kids who play sports after high school, like their premier teams and AAU teams, the opportu, they practice at night, so they're used to that. And that's, that's a great opportunity for these youth sports like soccer. The town youth sports have to go rent these generated lights to get these kids to practice right after school at four o'clock so they can get them on there. The lights are terrible. So the youth soccer sports, I mean, youth soccer in the fall loses out on a lot of opportunity. Then you'll have, you know, in the spring with lacrosse and soccer, you're giving a great opportunity now for these two groups to have a place to practice and close down other facilities so they can properly grow the grass so that they can have the youth field that you want. Would everybody like to play on grass? Absolutely. But when you have as many teams and sports as you do in this town, it is not feasible to have grass only anymore. We only have one football stadium. We have a whole Pop Warner League that has rejuvenated and come back. We need to give them more opportunities and more field space that they can use on a continuous basis. One football field is not gonna work. Create a football field on this multi-use field in the, where the football team would practice in the fall, you now give them an opportunity to have more practice facilities, space. They can share the space with the other sports teams. So this creates, from top to bottom, high school down, wonderful opportunities for all these kids for these fields. And the last thing I just want to touch on is the cost. It's ten dollars. I think it came out to be three point something million dollars to put the field turf down. And then another two million dollars twelve years down the road or ten years down the road, if you have to replace it, I think it's another two million dollars. So let's just say for argument's sake, the project is six million dollars. If you talk about six thousand-plus taxpayer homes in this town at a thousand dollars apiece over six years, you're talking forty-two dollars a quarter that it would cost the taxpayers to pay for this field and the replacement twelve years down the road. So that would give the, that's not a lot of money for forty-two dollars and we haven't even fundraised and taken in rentals yet. So I just want to make sure that, I think this needs a bigger conversation, but like TR said, I think the conversation needs to be through the school committee and the town at the same time. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Coach. Any other member of the public or the council? I, I do want to, Scott Pickering would like to be heard, Mr. Pickering. And while he's coming in, Carl, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, we talked about numbers to some degree. And this is really hard to do, but given when you evaluate the cost, you would want to consider what percentage increase in use are you going to get? A, with the Haynes Park expansion, which I think just makes a lot of sense to me, but and B, with with an artificial turf field put in that that the that the report envisions, do we have any sense for how much increased use we would have or how how much, you know, what would it, what would be the marginal benefit in terms of playing time or usage? I know, I could see, I, I, we understand that conceptually. And I think that, that, that that case has been made recently, just, I mean, Coach just made it. But to quantify it would be helpful, even within a broader range. How would you approach that?
So there is a metric that they use for field maintenance that says a grass field should be used twenty to twenty-five hours a week. We calculated that realistically, and these are the kind of times that I threw out before, you could use a turf field about fifty-eight hours a week. But that's not to say that it would always be used fifty-eight hours a week because if you added two grass fields, in theory, we have enough capacity to support the youth leagues right there. That's not necessarily true though, because we always have weather concerns. A lot of our fields are very poorly drained. I'll give you an example, Sherwood, now we had the wettest July in, you know, fifty years. The outfield at Sherwood was flooded for maybe four days after all rain was gone. So in those circumstances, you'd say, yes, the turf's gonna get some use, right? Everything's flooded. In ideal weather, the turf probably wouldn't get a lot of use at all because the grass fields, if you added two conventional grass fields, full-size, multi-use fields, you might be able to support the youth leagues' needs right there. But just on absolute playing hours, you would say it's about three times as much, and that's solely based on the appetite of the neighbors to see lights and hear kids. You know, it, it, talking to people who have installed these fields is true. They are twenty-four-hour-a-day usage with just normal wear and tear expected. So but, but if you say realistically, no one is, none of the youth leagues are gonna practice before four when their coaches might be able to skip out of work, more realistically, five. And if they have to wrap at nine. So you'd say on your best day, youth leagues are getting five hours a day usage plus the weekends.
And your feeling is that we would fill that time?
Sometimes yes, sometimes no. So, you know, again, you plan kind of for your peak demand, your peak hour. At your peak hour, all your resources are being used. But that's not always the case. And then when you have a weather event, you know, this all was precipitated when the middle school was offline and we had one of the wettest falls on record, I remember that. And there were rainouts every weekend. And during that period, I would have said, yeah, you would have used the turf field almost constantly because the grass fields were closed and they couldn't be opened. You know, even in good conditions, this fall was was exceptional weather for grass growing. But even at the end of the season, the middle school fields, if they were a little damp, there was a lot of hesitation to use them because they've been used solidly throughout the fall. And so the grass gets a little denuded and then a little bit of rain on it. And, you know, DPWC is writing on them all, this is gonna be trashed. You know, and and the struggle you really have is your demands on the fields are during your grass seeding seasons. You know, when do you want to seed grass around here? Mid-August. And then you want to tell everyone to stay off of it till October. Well, that's not realistic at all for soccer. Right, that's, you know, seven hundred little kids running around. That's the idea behind having one resting field at all times, is that you can just say, stay off of it for a year. But even at that, you know, your best fields in town, they, they do suffer. So you, you would anticipate, you know, anytime the weather is not cooperative, I would think that these turf fields would get mere constant use. And there's really not, you know, we kind of talked about it, there are ways to solve this. So I mean, one, one alternative people talk about is it's what's known as a sand field, really. It's a field, the base of which is, is your regular topsoil, but it's several inches underground. Above that is sand. And professional fields sometimes are like this, and they have PVC drainage pipes underneath to ensure good drainage. They're very labor-intensive, they're very fertilizer-intensive because sand doesn't hold nutrients, it just washes right through. So you gotta keep fertilizing it and all this, and it's a lot of work. But they hold up very well, they drain very well. The problem we have in Barrington is we don't have enough of them to even construct one of these because we don't have the capacity to say, let's shut down a couple of fields for a year and construct sandfields. I mean, if you, if you recall what happened when we shut the middle school fields down, it was, you know, and this isn't an exaggeration. Part of Shenaze is great, that's not above the landfill, it's irrigated, it's beautiful, it's everything. The landfill sign, when it was overused, I mean, it was a disaster. And there's nothing you can do about that at Shenaze. I mean, you can't irrigate it, we've looked into that. You know, you really can't dig it up and start from scratch because now you need to go get permitting and engineers to talk about, okay, it's a capped landfill. How do we improve the situation? You're talking millions of dollars. You know, if we had acres and acres, I mean, I was down at a facility in Tiberton, I mean, they just have endless acreage. And they can, you know, they can do these things, they can plan like this. Barrington doesn't allow for that. You know, we don't have vacant farmland waiting to be turned into a soccer field. You know, so again, is turf the solution? On a, on a regular, you know, nice weather weekend? No, you probably don't need it at all. It, it would go unused. But that's not really the reality we live with. I know that between a couple of falls ago and this summer, you know, everyone says, oh, well, this was the wettest, you know, fall on record. This is the wettest summer on record. Well, I don't know, is that normal? It might be from now on. Maybe that's what we need to plan for. One other thing to keep in mind too is, about twenty years ago, the town went through the same exercise. The result of that exercise was, we needed two new multi-use fields. And the way they achieved that was they tore out the dirt track at the middle school, which much like the track at Victory Field, having that there impedes the the flexibility of the space. That resulted by doing that in two multi-use fields. Twenty years later, we are saying, we need two more. Right? And this is a trend, and DPW, I mean, it obviously is on the Parks and Rec and John Rinquena would tell us about this all the time. It's a trend that's not gonna stop because every sport is a two-season sport now. Right, I mean, baseball was spring, soccer was fall, when I grew up. Now, both of them are two-season, lacrosse is two-season. I think Pop Warner had a spring this year, but I don't know if they're going to every year, if that was a COVID thing. But every sport is two-season. Add to that premier teams and, you know, select softball teams and there's just a lot more demand for this. It's a good problem to have, right? These are kids out playing sports. The struggle is, how do we, how do we meet that demand? And there's no easy solution. Turf would not be the solution in ideal conditions, but we don't always get ideal conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Pickering, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mike, Mr. President. So I, I often have a complaint that I, I bring up occasionally when I watch things in Barrington. I think there's a lot of times where Barrington tries to, either tries to or just ends up doing its own thing because it, it often outsmarts itself or, or makes it more complicated than it needs to be. And, and I feel like this is one of those cases. So I, I live here in town with, with five children and all are active and all came up playing youth sports. And, and I've been to every field, every facility. I myself played sports, played soccer into my forties all around Rhode Island. I've seen every facility out there and I can tell you in every single town in the state of Rhode Island, there's a large sports complex of some kind. And Mr. Boyajan was just speaking to it, some towns just have advantages in real estate and farmland and space that we don't have here in Barrington. But ninety-five percent of the youth games I've seen have been played on natural grass. And that's for all the kids that I've been involved with and watching. There's very few places where they have the kids out playing on artificial turf. When you get to the high school, and I have a stepdaughter who's played both varsity lacrosse and varsity field hockey in the past year, almost every single game is played on artificial turf. It's, it's a facility that's set up in reserves for the oldest athletes. It's typically at the high schools. In almost every high school in the state of Rhode Island, there is a turf stadium at the center of the campus. This past field hockey season, the Barrington Varsity Field Hockey Team played every single away game on artificial turf at every high school they competed against, at every private school and every public school they went to. And, and so I, I don't know why that wouldn't be, there, there might not be some lessons in there for the town of Barrington that there's probably reasons why all those communities, all those schools made those choices if they were gonna invest in artificial turf, that they put it at the place that would get the premium use by the premium athletes in the town. And very few are having little kids running around on turf. So I, I just think the turf thing, I think it's a Barrington School District issue. I think if the Barrington School District decides that it wants it, it should develop the plan, make the proposal and bring it to the town and argue for its benefits. I happen to personally think there would be benefits, but I, I don't think it's, should be driven by the town council leading the school department. I think it should be the school department leading the, leading the town and seeing if it could sell it. So I just go back to the, the youth field issue. In much of what Mr. Boyajan was saying, saying, you know, we just don't have the space and there were other comments made about Haynes Park. Yeah, Haynes Park is not good because it has an inadequate entrance and egress and exit. It's not good because it has insufficient parking areas. It has haphazard fields that were laid out at different times and different ways and different configurations. But it's a vast, underutilized, massive amount of space that if you started over and wiped it clean and reconceived what it could be, could be the facility that solves all the youth sports problems or at least improves all the, the youth sports issues. And, and I don't know why TR said that, you know, the, the local paper took shots at them saying they didn't do their job. No, I just think for whatever reason, the committee looked at Haynes Park and was deterred from going too aggressively and touching it or altering it or shifting it in any way. And I just think that was a mistake from the beginning. I think they worked hard, I think they did a lot of, put a lot of effort into it. I just feel that, that Haynes is a missed opportunity if all you do is tinker and tweak what's there. You're gonna end up with a couple of better fields, inadequate parking, a congested entryway and exit that gets jammed up with cars and is unsafe for emergency vehicles. And, and what's the point? So I would just encourage the, and I think you've even endorsed their proposal, which I would, I would criticize, but I, I just think you're, it's your last chance to do something quality for the youth sports in town, to create a complex that has good fields. And I'll just add one last thing. My stepson played with his teammates from Barrington a soccer game this past fall at Central Falls, which is a half-mile from the federal prison. It poured the day before torrential rain. And these are seventh and eighth graders, so basically the, the oldest kids you would get playing youth sports. We showed up the next morning, they had a gorgeous crowned field, similar to what Mr. Boyajan was talking about, a field constructed well, a gorgeous crowned field. Hours after a heavy, heavy rainstorm, we showed up, played a game, no issues, no problems with the field, no mud, no sliding, you know, no destruction of the field. And that's, that's what you get with a well-designed, well-conceived field that's crowned. And this is, I'm not kidding you. Behind us were tenement houses, people were having their morning coffee, hanging out the tenements a half-mile from the prison, watching the youth soccer fields, youth soccer game and at a facility nicer than anything we have in the town of Barrington. So it's possible, it can be done if you invested in sort of starting over and constructing some fields made for, for modern use. You'll get more life out of them, you'll survive the weather conditions, you'll expand the, the opportunities. And, and I don't think we need to force artificial turf to solve youth problems. I think they're two separate issues is my, my advice.
Thank you, Vice President Hahn.
Yeah, thank you. And I know Mr. Boyajan left, but thanks to him and TR and Coach Denham and, and, you know, all the other folks who worked on the report. I, I agree with some of the comments that, that TR, Coach Denham and Mr. Pickering just had with respect to the involvement of the school committee. I have a further comment, but a question first, maybe somebody can help me on that. Is, has this been, I, I know, I know Chairperson Bay and I think former member Clancy were on this ad hoc field committee, but has this been formally presented to the school committee as it has to the town council? And are they having discussions just as we are?
It has been presented to them. I reached out and Chair Bay told me that they had already had it presented. I, I thought we could do just our own, they could do their own too. They'd already done it, so they've already received the report at this stage. I don't know what their plans are going forward, but they have received it.
Yeah, you know, so I, I, just the first thing that comes to my mind, and this is something that we've talked about with some other issues too, not just this issue, but having that collaboration with the school committee, I think would be really helpful, especially in this instance because there's so much discussion about the school fields, whether it's Victory Field or whether it's the, the outfield of the baseball fields over there. So, you know, I, I, I think that that's one thing that I would support in terms of having that collective discussion. um, you know, I I I think that that's one thing that I would support in terms of having that collective discussion. Um, I know that it's just on our agenda to receive it, but if there were any recommendations in terms of re- next steps, um, I'd be in support of something like that. Um, so that's, that's, that's one comment. Um, another comment, I want to say fully unrelated to the turf, but um, there was some discussion about the uh, the Chinesi fields, especially the lower Chinesi fields on the landfill and um, you know, I know from experience just how bad those fields are and and I've heard the stories, there's nothing we can do. Um, and I I I get it. I I understand why. But I'm wondering if um, if if the committee um, did take a a a look at that particular field, because I think it does house, I don't know, I'm guessing at least three or four um, sports fields, whether it's lacrosse or soccer, and whether there are options um, that could improve the quality of that field on a more permanent basis. I'm sure the answer to permanency is probably no because of the the cap landfill, but if there are any options there and um, just throwing this out hypothetically, but I I think Mr. Boyajin had said, and the report says too, that um, turf wasn't seriously considered for that area because of some of the environmental issues with the cap landfill. Um, but a a a layperson's maybe somewhat ignorant question that I have are what what would the the increased cost or environmental effects be of putting in turf or something similar or some other type of preventative measures versus playing directly on the gap, on on grass of that cap landfill, on top of that cap landfill? Um, that's just an answer. I don't know because that that's not my area of expertise. Um, so I'm mentioning that, not with any recommendations, but more just questions that that I have. And I don't know if there's anybody on the call who who has those answers, but I'll stop there.
I don't think, I don't think Steve, I could, I could be wrong and I don't want to speak for him, but I don't think he was saying that there were environmental concerns as to turf on the, on the land, cap landfill. I think he was focusing on how number one, you you can't really irrigate it. You can't dig a well anywhere near there, so you have to pay for Bristol County water for it. Uh, number two, you can't sort of start over and um, and dig down and and re-soil it. But his focus was on grass. I don't think he was talking about um, turf at that location. But maybe TR, you could explain whether it was considered at, at that location for turf.
Am I unmuted still?
You're, you're, I can hear you.
Um, just a couple of things. Lighting now is uh, more focused, just so that we get into the lighting. It's more focused in whatever area you're using. The town has a policy at ten o'clock, whatever lights are being uh, shut off automatically at ten o'clock. The question that Mr. Hum has on Chinesi, we look at Chinesi as one of the fields, but with the state regulations and DEM, we were only able to use those fields temporarily as football or Pop Warner lacrosse while the fields were being reconstructed at the middle school. They were not supposed to be used in the order that they were used. So we would not be able to put turf. We would not be able to redo or reseed um, any type of a cap landfill. So that was totally out of the question. We hit many different areas of town with fields that we thought we could have been using. Um, Haynes Park, to go to Mr. Pickering's question, was that we had a conceptual drawing done in order to do a thirty-year lease. We gave them a plan on what we would do. That would be to rearrange Harrington, uh, Little Harrington softball field and baseball field. We would get one full field up in the front and with limited cutting of trees and redoing of anything. That was the whole big aspect. If you remember back in I think it was two thousand and twelve, Phil, maybe you can correct me. They did the whole project where they wanted to do a whole type of sports complex at Haynes Park and that wasn't going to fly. So Haynes Park is a big open space for us. We didn't want to do much more expansion of fields or um, anything else to Haynes Park. We were trying to do as little as possible in order to achieve two fields. And then the other aspect was the turf, as you know what we're talking about now. So any cap field, we cannot use technically as a full type of field. They were only temporary fields. And like Steve said, the grass growing, the primary grass growing is in the fall. So anywhere between September and November is prime grass growing season.
So I'll add one, one thing. Um, we're not the owner of Haynes Park, we're, we're the tenant. So
Right.
we, we can't, we can't, I'd love to see a larger sports complex. Uh, I, I wish we had more land somewhere. But that's sort of up to the landlord. Uh, Council Brier has had his hand raised. Please, go ahead.
Is, actually, that's, that's what I was going to say about Haynes Park. Um, it's not that we, we are the, the subcommittee that worked on it. It's not that Haynes Park wasn't looked at to do more. It's that the state told us outright that we could not do much there. So really, the the minimal approach that we took was guided by them. We're doing the most we can do with that space because we're not in control of it.
Okay, Mr. Liver, Liverney. Will Liverney uh, has had his hand raised. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for um, a few minutes here. Um, and thanks to Steve and the committee, obviously, for doing all the work in the turf fields. Um, so other than my day job as a physician, I basically spend majority of my life coaching youth sports in town. Uh, I coach, uh, you know, youth softball, youth baseball. I was proud to coach the, the return of the football team this year, the twelve U Barrington Pop Warner team. I coached the uh, All-Star team in the, in the, for the majors All-Star team this last summer. Um, so I have, I have a pretty good feel on the appetite of the kids and the parents and 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 sort of the, the feeling of what they, what they feel about the field usage. And I, I want to make the, the biggest point, I think, is the, the availability of fields. So if if turf helps that solution, great. If it, if it's really just the grass drainage or whatever it might be, or the, the quality of the fields, maybe that's the solution. But what, whatever solution that the town can come to, the availability of fields, just in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of dozens and dozens of families that I've coached, it, it has to improve. Um, as an example, in our All-Star season last year, we had, we were fortunate enough to play eight games and had a great run. We only had one home game because Barrington could not have a field that would, when it rained, it was closed for days. For other towns around, we, we, we would have to have to make it a travel game and go to their town. My girl's softball team, when they went to the All-Stars and I coached them, that we had zero home games. Um, for the football team, we were closed all fall for weeks, trying to, with the brand-new program, trying to compete with these other towns. And literally, we'd have no practice all week for fields being closed, get it to a game and try and, before the game on someone else's field, trying to put together a game plan. I cannot tell you how impossible this is in, in football. If you know and watch the sport, it's nearly impossible. So for youth sports in the town, the biggest thing is field availability. And and the last thing I'll say about that is, we've talked a little bit about injuries and turf. The mental health aspect of kids being outside and playing is so important. And I cannot tell you how many times during the last two years of COVID, I have been devastated to tell these kids that they ha- they cannot play outside, that they have to go home. They come to the field, no, I'm sorry, guys, go home. And that, to me, is just as important or even more important than the slight potential increase in injuries, which I always worry about as a coach and a parent. But but the mental health aspect of giving the kids of this town field availability in any way possible, that, that's, I think should be the mission.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, anyone else from the council or um, not seeing anyone. I, I want to just, before we move on to uh, the financial part of it, I, I just wanted to add something that is a cost not really associated necessarily with the turf field, but just with Barrington's future. Um, we're looking at a future of flooding and we have to account for that. Uh, we have to prepare for that. So i- if we're talking about a field uh, in the location, a turf field in that location, it might be great. I, I could see a lot of the advantages to it. But we really ought to consider building some kind of berm or levee around uh, that field, because that field's going to be underwater and that'll ruin it. Uh, there was a, a story in uh, I don't know, it was New York Times or something. Phil and I were talking about evolving a field on Staten Island after Hurricane Bob. When it's submerged, it destroys the, the, the field, the, the turf field. That space is going to be underwater and 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 not in fifty years. Um, the hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight was a hundred-year storm, almost a hundred years ago. If that happened today, that space would be underwater. Feet of water. It, it, it wouldn't be a couple of inches on the field. It'd be under a few feet of water. Uh, there's a, a marking in the white church that if you go into it, right by the bridge is a brass marking that'll show you how high the water came in nineteen thirty-eight. And that field will be underwater. The library will be flooded at the high school. So we've got a lot of work to do uh, to prepare for these things. And I think every project that we plan on, a new building or anything, new field, we have to do it with the future in mind and, and protected enough. Um, I wanted to ask Jacob if he could take us through the financial pieces, as Steve Boyajin was good enough to take us through the other three parts of it. Could you take us through that, please?
Yeah, yeah, I can go through that again. So the um, there are two, two pieces of the financial portion that we looked at. Um, the first is how to cover maintenance costs, um, ongoing annual cost of using the fields. Right now, the way that the um, usage fees work is the number of athletes. Um, there's, there's a fee associated, and I believe it's um, ten dollars per athlete or five dollars per athlete per year. Um, and so the league pays that based on the number of athletes who enroll in their uh, league. The, something that we looked at was a transitioning to um, a rental model. And the reason for that is the the field use is something that all taxpayers pay for with our property taxes, and it's a benefit that's available to everybody in town. It's a, a public field. Anybody can use it. Except when a league reserves it and they have exclusive use of the field. And so rather than paying twice to be able to use the field, uh, you'd be paying in order to restrict it for your league's use. Um, the, the goal behind it wasn't to increase or decrease the amount of total money paid by the leagues. The goal would be to set that rental rate at an amount that would be about the same cost to the leagues and at about the same revenue for the town. But then, as leagues grow or shrink based on athletes, if that's not directly related to how many fields they need or how long they need them for, how many days they need them, their pricing wouldn't change based on the number of people they have playing. It would change based on the amount of league time or the amount of field time that they need. The other part of the funding that we looked at was if there was going to be a large capital investment, whether it's the balance of whatever a state grant doesn't cover for Haynes Park, whether it's the cost of a, a large new natural field or whether it's this, you know, multimillion um, artificial turf facility. A question of how to fund it, whether it would be all taxes, whether it would be a combination of grants, taxes, or whether there are other opportunities. And we thought that creating a, a fundraising committee for it and having either sponsorships or um, donation recognition for a large um, public space was something that should be explored if we are going to go through, um, go forward with a capital project for a new facility. So those are the, the two areas of recommendation.
And when you say a um, a rental uh, model, um, would that be, so the would, for example, uh, Little League um, pay for each time they use the field or an estimate at the beginning of the season, they would pay, you know, a one-time fee based on their estimated use?
Right, so it would be, it, it would be the, the latter. So you would say, you know, our, our season is, let's say it's six weeks long and you need three fields a day for two hours. So you would just multiply that, the, the two hours a day, five days a week, six weeks, times the rate for a field, with the, you know, whatever the rate set for a baseball field is, and that would be the, the fee. Um, I, I'm sure we look at whether if the town has to close the fields because of rain and they can't use them, do they get a credit? Uh, if they extend their season because they made it to the playoffs, sort of the Little League World Series, do they have to rent it more? But they wouldn't be transacting each instance that they want the field. You know, there's not going to be a, a toll booth, you know, at the gates, but yeah, I think a beginning of season estimate or an annual estimate of when, when you rent for your league, um, you would pay the fee.
And and if you used it more than that, would you have to pay an additional amount? So if you estimated, I'll use it X number of times, but then you said, oh, we made the playoffs, we've got to get some more practices, and would you pay additional?
So that's what I, that's what I just said. I think it's something that would be looked into. Um, we didn't, we didn't come up with exact figures because we know it's a, a changing model and leagues' needs are going to change from year to year. So it was more a recommendation to look at what the actual numbers would be and to see if, if that transition makes sense. So yeah, there, there's certainly questions to still answer based on how it would be set up.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions. Um, this was just to discuss, we don't need to act on this at this time. In fact, I don't know how we would act on it until we got more information in terms of what the um, what the, the folks wanted to do, what the school department wanted to do. Uh, TR, please, go ahead.
Uh, should we try to put something on the agenda somewhere down the road to do a joint meeting? I think it would probably be feasible to do a special meeting, not like included in your town council meeting. We've taken up quite a bit of time of your time and you still got quite a bigger agenda. We can come have both the plan and the school committee together at the same time and we could, we'll meet that way, just so we're all on the same page. Because you know, my thing was, if you want to do away with something, you form an ad hoc committee and it kind of goes away. That's what I want to do and I'll never do that. I'll be a pain in your butt until uh, we get everything done.
I can't imagine that. I can't. Um, no, I, I think basically, I think it makes, to me, it makes a lot of sense that if you're going to do a turf field, the locations are, are somewhat limited. Um, as, as Steve kind of went through, and that one makes sense. Um, but that's, we don't have jurisdiction over that. So it's only when the school department wants, a school committee wants to have a turf field that we could provide any value to that.
Right. But that ad hoc was a joint committee and they were on board with what we were coming up with. So that's why I'm saying we have to meet. That was the whole object of this ad hoc committee.
I, I, but I, you're uh, if you're looking to be a pain in someone's behind, it would probably be the school committee because I can't, I can't decide we're going to have a turf field on.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we should joint meet and go over everything. So we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Council and committee at the same meeting, which is what we were supposed to be doing, which we did as the ad hoc. And then the final was going to be everybody together. Once it got proposed to each group, then we were supposed to have a joint group meeting. If I'm not mistaken, that's what I kind of remember when we formed the ad hoc committee.
Okay. Um, well, I, I don't see the, the benefit of an additional meeting, but I'm certainly open to it. So if you can persuade other folks for that, uh, I'd be open to it. Um, I do want to move on though, because we have Um, I do want to move on though, because we have taken a lot of time on this. Um, the, the next item on the agenda is. To discuss an act of creating a park on town property near Woods Pond. It's, that's sort of in front of the PEC Center. Um, and this is Council Breyer's, uh. Uh, initiative. Council Breyer.
Yes, um, so my, my first date with Danny was at Boston Common. Park, um, Boston Common Garden up in center of Boston. We played catch, we walked around the pond there, um. Saw families, you know, sitting down and eating, saw other, other couples walking around, saw seniors, um. You know, sitting on park benches. And. You know, that, um. The similarities between Boston and Barrington might end at the B that they start with, but. We can still recreate that same sort of feel and the same sort of magic that. You find in, in large public parks, um, having Woods Pond right there. Being able to create a space right in the center of town. Where folks can come, walk around, have a seat, um, take a lunch break. Um, any number of things, holding community events in there. Uh, we saw last summer from both the success of Courtyard at the Cove. And also the film Forward Film Festival, just how much our community and beyond want to come together. In town. And I think we need to look at ways to create more spaces to do that. And I think we have an underutilized space that could be really a, a beautiful setting. Where folks are going to want to come and, and make memories and spend time. And so, um, I've spoken about it a few times with the town manager and he. Um, he has a suggestion that, that we refer this to. Um, the Open Space Committee and the Parks and Rec, and I think that's a terrific idea to. Get some guidance on what we might want to ask, uh, landscape architect. Um, to draft up, um, but I'm, I'm interested to hear others. Other thoughts on creating that kind of space.
Any members of the council? Want to be heard on this? Vice President Hum.
Yeah, thank you and, and Mr. Breyer, thank you. Um, the. I think one question I have, and I, I mentioned this at, um. Either our last meeting or, um, or another meeting. Um, was about the cost of this proposal. Do, do you have any additional information on that at this point?
No, so from, from the initial discussion, um, with Phil, the, the range of a hundred thousand dollars. Is sort of where he ballparked it. Um, that said. Because it's not a, um. It's, there's not a specific outcome yet. It's something that can also be worked toward incrementally. You know, you can. You can, if you have a vision for the whole space, you can say, well, we'll, we'll work on this area and create some. Picnic tables and benches, um, maybe a little. Flower bed, something like that. And then if you're doing that as part of a larger vision. Then over a few years, you can create what you're looking for without a huge investment. Or, um, maybe you can get the whole thing done at once if there's community support to, to create that sort of thing.
Uh, anyone, anyone else? Okay. Um, so does anyone want to make a motion to refer this to the? Um, Open Space Committee and Parks and Rec?
So I'll, I'll make a motion to refer this to the Parks and Rec Committee and the Open Space Committee. For recommendations to be made to the council for our. Um, March. The sixth? March sixth council meeting?
I think they probably need a little bit more time than that to, to consider it.
That would give two meetings between now and then.
Yeah.
You think they need more than two meetings?
Oh, yeah, I, I think so. Um. I mean, it's, um, they might want to. Get some input from, um, different. I, I don't know what they're gonna, uh, talk to folks about, but this is a. A whole new park in, in Barrington, so it's kind of a. Bigger deal. Um. I, I think May or June. Yes, Vice President Hum.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say the same thing. I, I, just in my opinion, I, I think it's worth referring it, um, to them, but I. I would suspect that their January meetings are probably already booked. Um, in terms of action items, so I think January is out. So February would really be the first meeting. Um, I don't think that would give them sufficient time. I think they probably should have at least a couple of months, um. They might have questions, um, might want more feedback, might want. You know, either guest presentations or something along those lines, but, uh, uh, yeah, I think that'd be. Uh, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of, um, uh. Forwarding it to, to those boards to take a look at, but I, I think they would need more time to give sufficient feedback.
We have a representative from Parks and Rec and I think he's raising his hand. Uh, uh, TR.
Hello again, not to put Phil on the spot, but, um, I believe we were talking about. Doing some type of, uh, croquet or. Some other type of thing there is, is the spot that looking at to put this. And we were talking about maybe doing something to the. The, uh, water access at the same place. So not to put Phil on the, but, um. I'm not sure what type of park you're looking for. Like thing was on our, uh, agenda. Or our. Past agenda.
Phil?
Yeah, so TR, this is a space that's near, near County Road. Near Woods Pond. Um, possibly to include the area around Woods Pond, so. Uh, the space that the Parks and Rec Commission looked at was by the kayak launch. That's for the bocce and croquet.
The other side.
I'm sorry, misunderstood.
Yep.
Yeah, it's the other side of the building. Um. Okay, um. Uh, you know, I'd like to give until, um, till May to, to. Do that, just to give them plenty of time for it. Um. You've made a motion. Jake, would you amend it to, to give until May?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm trying to pull up the dates, so May second, I guess, um. So yeah, I'll, I'll amend it to our May second meeting.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone who wants to second that?
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made by Council Breyer, seconded by Vice President Hum. Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Council Breyer?
Aye.
Council Conway?
Aye.
Council Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Um, next item is to discuss an act on bids and Alan Corby, this is. Um, for, this is an addition for the, the truck. Uh, please go ahead. Go ahead, Alan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, we broke before you last October at the council meeting, the award of a bid for a vehicle. Um, for a hundred seventy-six thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. At that time, we didn't receive any other bids. Um. I think there's a lot of uncertainty out there with, uh, the supply chain issue. And we only received one bid from a local vendor. Um. Uh, you know, a national, uh, supply chain issues have affected all of, all the bidders. And what's happening now is, um, because of lack of materials and equipment and manpower. Um, it, prices are increasing and at the national level. Um, a, a memo was issued by this vendor. To, uh, increase the price nationwide for all these vehicles. Um, and we got notice of it. And the truck has not been built yet. It's going, it's going into production in April. So we were told there's going to be an additional cost of three thousand dollars. Um, I did confer with the solicitor's office and because it was only one bid. It is acceptable to do a sole source. Um, so we're requesting to revise the bid to a hundred seventy-nine thousand. Five hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents to AT Northern of Warwick LLC. Um, and I'm hoping you, uh, support this.
Any questions for Alan? Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I will move to approve adding three thousand dollars to the original approved bid award for a new total of. One hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. To complete the purchase of a forty-one. Thousand gross vehicle weight dump truck with plow from AT Northern Warwick LLC.
Uh, motion's been made by Vice President Hum. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Conway. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Um. The next item on, we have no new ordinances to introduce. Uh, next item on the agenda is, um. Uh, the, uh, public hearing on the declaration of emergency. Uh, for our attendees. Um, we have been renewing this declaration of emergency. There are a number of reasons to do it, um. Both for potential, uh, funding issues for emergencies and because it's an emergency and. Uh, our town manager just, um. Enacted a new emergency order. Um, which directs us to, uh, hold our meetings by Zoom. That's a little bit different, by the way, than the, the order issued by the governor, which. Permitted towns to do it by Zoom, but did not require it. Our manager is, uh, requiring it, uh, for purposes of safety. Under the circumstances. So, um, I am opening the public hearing into twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Dash one renewal of ordinance declaration of emergency. Um, is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard on this? Please raise your hand if you would. Okay, seeing none. Anyone on the council? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Um, does anyone want to make a motion?
Do. And I'll move to adopt the twenty-twenty-two dash one renewal of declaration of emergency as presented.
Motion's been made by Vice President Home and Hum and seconded by Counsel Conway. Uh, Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Breyer?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss an act on amendment to the council rules of procedure. This is Counsel Breyer's initiative.
Yes, um, so our, our system of government operates at its best when it operates transparently. Inclusively and equitably. We've each been elected with an expectation to deliver that. Recent events. Made it clear that our local government would benefit from additional guardrails to ensure that delivery. Regardless of the people serving Barrington's government, whether it's us or others in the future. Our neighbors should be able to have the confidence that the people they elect are equally informed about town matters. I spoke with Solicitor Ursillo and he suggested some appropriate ways that the town. Could hold that confidence and that would be to adjust our rules and procedures. Uh, in two ways. One would be to codify an expectation that general town relevant information. That's shared by the town administration is provided to all council members. And the other is that each council member has the right, without special permission from the council president. To send open meetings act compliant memos to the council through the clerk's office. And so I'm curious what others, um, think of those, uh, potential changes and, um. I'd like to discuss them.
Open.
Sorry?
Hear that. Open Meetings Act what?
That, that council members have the right to send memos through the clerk's office that are not in violation of the Open Meetings Act. Without receiving special permission from a council president.
You don't need permission from me.
Um, not by, not by rule, but in practice, um, there have been memos that I've asked the clerk's office to send. That have not been sent to the council.
I've never, I've never stopped the memo. I did stop one because you had a. Reference to your campaign website, which I didn't think was appropriate, but I. We took whatever was on the campaign website and put it in the memo. So I've never stopped one of your memos.
Um, you stopped one a- about this item on the agenda. You stopped one about council liaisons to boards and commissions. You stopped one about the parking ordinance. I mean, I, I have your response right now.
The, the first issue you're talking about what the town manager. Uh, should do and that's really. That's a condition of employment. The, uh, rules of procedure for the. Town council, um. Uh. Really apply to the town council, not the town manager. So with respect to the solicitor. You're really talking about a, uh, an issue that should be a condition of employment. Not a condition for the, the council. Because it's the manager you're talking about. Um. So that's, that's my view. I don't think it's appropriate for that. Uh, I, I don't understand how you've, I, I don't have the power or ability to stop. I, I've only once stopped that, as I mentioned, because I didn't think it was appropriate to have the. Uh, a, a link to a campaign website during a meeting. Uh, but other than that, I, I haven't. Yeah, I can't stop you. You have their email addresses. You can send it. Um, so those are my views. I don't think it's appropriate to amend them in that way for those reasons. But I'd certainly, uh, be willing to hear from my colleagues on that. Okay.
So to, to clarify, are, are you saying that the, the email that I asked the clerk's office? To forward to the council about this agenda item last week? Was sent to the council? I've received a reply from you about why it was not being sent to the council.
Oh, no, you're mistaken. I assumed that was sent to the council. I don't know whether it was because we're always BCC. I assumed it was sent to the council. Um, I, I don't know if my colleagues got that, that memo that was requested. I can't tell the, you can send them to the council if you want. I don't stop them. So you're mistaken. Um, does anyone else want to comment on this?
But I'm actually, I'm just going to raise one comment. It, it, it sounds like this discussion. Is probably something that should be taking place offline as opposed to as an agenda item at a council meeting. Um, I gotta say, I'm sitting here, this is a bit awkward. I have no idea what's going on right now. Um, I, I don't fully understand the last, the second issue about memos, um. That's really confusing to me right now. I'm not really following, but it sounds like there's a particular. Um. Beef or issue or, or something that, that somebody might have with. Another member, I, I. I'm just, I'm a little taken aback that it's being presented this way. Um, it, it sounds like it's, um. Some sniping or, or something along those lines. I don't know the best word to use, but. I'm just, I'm, I'm sitting here just watching this happen. I don't feel very comfortable right now. I don't think this was the appropriate way to take care of it. Um. That's just my opinion based on what I've seen so far.
Anyone else? Jacob, if you want to make a motion, please go ahead.
Um, I would just like to say there's, there's not a means to discuss this offline. That the Open Meetings Act requires that we have these discussions. In public. I, I would like to be able to sit down and explain it. Privately, but, but we're prohibited from doing so. And so this is the only means. By which I, I can get these issues addressed.
Actually, it's not because you could have written to me. Um, I wrote to you a couple of times, but I don't want to get into this. Now, if you want to talk to me privately, you certainly can. I've never stopped one of your memos from going around. And, and I resent the, the suggestion that I did. Um, as to, uh, discussions about. The town manager and requirements for the town manager employment, that clearly is something that is designed for. Um, executive session. Our laws are, are designed to protect. Uh, the treatment of personnel matters so that we can go into. uh, the treatment of personnel matters so that we can go into executive session for that. And in fact, we face liability if we reveal certain personnel matters outside that. Um, I wonder if we need a rule that says that we need to, uh, no single member of the council can decide to discipline a uh, town manager.
Are, are you suggesting that you've disciplined a town manager individually?
No, I'm suggesting that you yelled at a town manager in an open meeting and went to the paper and talked about it. And I don't think that's appropriate, because the town manager has five bosses. We're, we're the ones who decide on any disciplinary matters involving the town manager. And it's not appropriate for you to decide for us. We could
I spoke about the abuse that I received.
Rule, if you'll just agree that next time you have a problem with the town manager, you'll come to us. Do you want to make a motion?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, does anyone else have a motion? Carl?
No motion, but I, I think there was no other way to interpret the conduct at that last meeting, other than a public reprimand and rebuke. And technically, it may have been prior to the meeting, but when there is a problem with any municipal employee, that is definitively, definitively an executive session issue with any municipal employee. That is the procedure, and there's a reason for that. And I think that when we're talking about the manner in which an individual performs their job, there's a reason for privacy on that. And there's also a reason for that individual to have a measure of discretion. We cannot micromanage the ways in which individuals communicate, and we shouldn't try except to the extent that it can become part of a general performance review. And when a municipal employee acts a certain way or behaves in a way that, that we may support or not support in terms of communication, that is a broader issue. To, to try to suggest that there's got to be some things that are, are, someone might see as trivial or a courtesy or uh, and therefore would not, it wouldn't be necessary to communicate to all. Um, or to the idea that, that, that we may have, get into disputes over um, whether continued communications with an individual counselor would be inhibiting that municipal employee from performing their job. That's all stuff for performance review. That is, that, that is, and that is always an executive session. And so that, to bring this to light in this matter, um, yeah, I think it's, I, I would echo that. I think that's totally inappropriate and totally wrong, and it's, and it's dysfunctional. And by the way, if we're talking about transparency and messaging, I think that, that we're, we're entering budget season. We have bike path bridges, we have sea level rise, we have field expansion, we're just talking about, we have senior housing, affordable housing, all kinds of issues, Carmelite, ZIA. Those are the things that should be communicated to the public. And whether we do that through the media, or whether we do that through these meetings, or whether we do that through newsletters, or whether we do that in any other manner, to get into this kind of thing now and here, or at the last meeting, takes away from that message. That reduces our ability to communicate and to be transparent and to focus on real issues, real problems, real challenges. And that's how we should be spending our time. That's my comment.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda, and this is our new town managers to discuss an act on a goal-setting retreat with a facilitator for the town. Phil, please go ahead.
Um, yes, so I talked to you about this, Mike, with um, President Carroll to get this on the agenda as a potential way to um, get council input and on goals, goal setting for the coming year, or whatever timeframe you'd like. Um, and ideally, this would happen as developed, as the budget's beginning, kind of still in the process before it's finalized and presented. So uh, this would take place within, I would say, probably the next month, like probably, I don't know, early February, early mid-February. Um, I've been in contact with a seems like an excellent facilitator. I highly recommend it. Um, she worked with uh, wrote down DOT on some recent training, um, got high marks. And this Emily Moore, uh, Moore Ash, she's actually based out of Ohio, so this Zoom setup works pretty well. Makes it cheaper. Um, she's, she uh, is, she has lived in Rhode Island past, and she's done some other ex, uh, other types of these types of uh, exercises in, in Rhode Island. And she's done this goal-setting kind of retreats in, for several town councils in the state of Ohio. Um, so she, she works a lot with nonprofits um, as well. So um, I asked her about the, this would be like a three-hour session. And so I was thinking six to nine PM. It would include some, before that session ha- happens, she put out a survey um, to get anonymous input from all the council members to help form, formulate the actual agenda and how this, this meeting would work. Uh, and would come out and, and she would facilitate the discussion through the night, through this three-hour session. And she would, it would produce a, a report that, uh, for the council in the end. So it's about uh, it's probably about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars uh, worth of consultant fees, given all this time that would, that this would take. And she said, she said tonight uh, would be helpful to get an idea of some of the topics, some of the general goals for the session, and, and some of the issues of concern you might have heard from constituents to that you might want to talk about at the, at the call setting session. So that, that's a, that's about it. That's
Putting it. I think that's a, I think it's a great idea. Um, I don't know what my fellow counselors feel about it, but uh, I'd be in favor of trying to schedule that in the next month or so. Um, because we can do it by Zoom, it's sort of more convenient. Um, and uh, I, I'd be prepared to, to um, move to add some money from the um, contingency fund to pay for this facilitator. Uh, does anyone want to be heard on this? Counsel Castell?
Yeah, I, I just know uh, from a past uh, counselor, former counselor, that this kind of thing had been done, something along these lines in the past, and, and they found it to be um, really fruitful and, and, and useful. And then it allows um, just a different format of that kind of a meeting, uh, brings in some more creativity and looseness to it that can be really really helpful. So I, I would endorse it as well.
Great. Anyone else? Counsel Conway?
I think it's a great idea. Um, I'd love to, to be able to set some goals and shared goals and work towards some shared ideals, so I think that's a great idea, Phil. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and, and Phil, did you say uh, fifteen hundred dollars was kind of the?
I mean, it's hard to say. I, I would think the absolute maximum would be two thousand, uh, but typically she says it's probably closer to twelve hundred. But it depends. The, she's, it's hard to say until you actually kind of go through it.
Okay. But what if we said fifteen hundred, and then if we had to come back, we could do that too?
Okay.
Um, so I'll make a motion to authorize up to one thousand five hundred dollars from the council contingency fund to cover the cost of a town council goal-setting retreat.
Second.
I made the motion, seconded by Counsel Conway. Any further discussion? Okay, Vice President Hum, how do you vote? Uh, I looked like aye, but I couldn't hear you yet.
Aye, can you hear me?
Okay. Uh, Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, that motion carries. Great, Phil, so um, I don't know if we, we haven't started polling for that, or, or have we, to, to get a good data?
Have not.
So um, we'll turn that around. The last item on our agenda is to set the agenda for a February seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Um, this is one, there, the um, our solicitors working with some other committees have been, well, working on an ordinance amendment to short-term rentals. Uh, that'll be on the agenda. Good en, good energy. Um, we'll be in to talk about our community aggregation uh, issue and the terms of the agreement. And um, the Senior Services Advisory Board uh, has a couple of things that they would like to talk to us about, including a mission statement, and then the tax um, uh, some tax relief for seniors. Does anyone have, any, anyone else have anything they'd like to add to the agenda? Yes, Counsel Castell?
Couple of placeholders. Um, we may be able to revisit, as we talked about actually at the meeting, the, the liquor license for Prince Ali. That is something that is still in the works. I just want to keep that as a placeholder. I, I'd like to start that process. That may be a two-meeting or a two-step process once we do it. Um, I, I have had some um, communication with Solicitor's Office on it. And I, I'm not ready to commit to saying it'll definitely be there, but, but um, but I, I'd like that as a placeholder. The second thing is um, there may be some, and you may have seen the, the memo that came down from the Solicitor's Office about enabling legislation uh, that we could support with a resolution, which could eventually lead to more competition, bringing, bringing in another ISP, which is something I think a lot of residents I've talked to would be interested in, having some competition in that, in that uh, area would be a positive thing. And um, I'm gonna work on seeing if I can put something together for that. So I want to put sort of a marker down for that. It doesn't have to be next meeting if, if we have um, you know, if, if we have a lot on the agenda, I understand that, but I, I also want to throw that out there as, as something I, I may be interested in doing.
Okay, um, and then the ISP, that's a motion. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, uh, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Vice President Hum, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counsel Brier?
Aye.
Counsel Conway?
Aye.
Counsel Castell?
Aye.
And I also vote aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Thank you.